Hey, do we have any public participation tonight? Oh, yes.
I see item four on your new business. I just wonder if I'll be able to ask a question when that comes up or if I can ask it now.
As member of the public, you can ask a question, yeah.
Well, or would have you kind of wait until for discussion?
Um, probably wait till it's done. It's gonna be a long meeting, I don't think, so. Any further public participation? Okay. So the approval of the October tenth, two thousand nineteen school committee minutes as written with corrections as recommended by superintendents of schools.
I move that we accept the minutes as written and I like how I think they are. Second and second.
Thank you. Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, one sort of last week's minute.
Excuse me?
Uh, last week's minute?
Yes.
Okay.
October tenth.
Uh, just one minute and I apologize. Uh, well, we're gonna talk about all of these, uh, all of the policies, right? Because we had our first reading and we approved.
Policies are on the, I mean, there's it tonight, yes.
Okay. I'll bring it up under board committee. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. So we have a second on that. All in favor of accepting this? All opposed? Okay. Principals report. This one big?
Yeah, two sided. So Mr. Ashby has been fortunate enough to receive a donation from the Lubec Women's Club for a Gaga ball pet. Um, it's a game the kids have been playing. They really enjoy something new to wow students with, um, the goal of raising enough money to eventually purchase one.
What is it?
Yeah, what is the Gaga? I saw a contributor online, but it was like, yeah, what does it do?
It's a safe dodge ball, might want to say, for people who are playing dodgeball. Put in the octagon pit and strike the ball with your hand and the ball has to strike the person below the waist and they will go to the game. The games are quick, uh, it's safe and, uh, it's a blast. Kids will play it. And right now I've been using, uh, different, uh, maps and stuff to build our pit. Uh, so this is an official dodge ball that we don't deal with.
So the donation is partial, sort of?
Yeah.
I believe, um, you were looking for other means of funding, something like that?
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
How much more money can you?
They're quite expensive. Uh, they're over four thousand dollars and the women's club is gonna give us some money. I believe the nation's is gonna give us some money, so, 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 for sure on the time we're setting up, but I think appropriate show up all at the end, so it wouldn't quite put it together.
I'm hoping they'll leave the town. If we can find what they're used for, the miscellaneous accounts that our school has, staff, we're gonna be able to hopefully find some money to, you know, help you. Uh, plus I know that you did something outside for the kids. Uh, I don't know how much staff costs, but I could see that the kids really love the pop game, whatever they would.
Oh, the four square game?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yep, that'd be great, thank you.
In the past, we've talked about, um, when we bid for fuel and that type of stuff about combining with the town office. So I did call Renee, um, just to get an idea of what it is they do. They put all their bids out, they have to do them before July first, and I don't know how that would impact us. She did give me some prices, um, that is public information, for heating fuel. They get that from Dead River and that's at two dollars and forty-six cents a gallon. She talked about bus fuel and how they use a fleet card, which I'm not familiar with, but it's like eight point five percent off at the pump. I don't know if that would be in comparison. And she also talked about something else that we might be able to join in would be vehicle repairs, um, on our buses and that type of stuff. Um, so I don't know if it's things that you're still interested in, if it's something you would want more information, if the July first deadline gets in the way for us.
Well, I think traditionally we get the few bits, at least by the second meeting of the year, correct?
Usually would, or even the end of all, end of September or the first of October. So, yeah.
So I mean, we can.
But Renee had to have it by July.
Yeah, that's what she said, they must have it by July first. I mean, it's something to think about when we talk about it at next meeting or how we would like.
Well, it's three cents cheaper than what we're paying right now while we get on.
Well, I know that in the past Dead River had a certain thing in the contract where you had to commit to a certain amount of gallons per year in order to get a certain price. And I believe that was on the last bid that they gave us two years ago.
And, and, and be more, to be more specific, they reserve the right to bill you for unused gallons. Basically, they have to preorder and they lock them at their price. And if we have a mild winter and no paid delivery, their money is tied up and they reserve the right in the contract land to fill up a unused gallon. So I don't know how that would play out because where the town office has a smaller issue and something like that, they have probably a little better handle on how much they're spending on fuel per year, you know, if, you know, they have to get built for a hundred gallons, it's better than getting built for five thousand gallons. So I don't know.
And I don't know if you're interested in any of the other things, the fleet card on the fuel for the buses, I'm not familiar with that. And I can talk more or I can let go or? Yeah, no, she talked about, one time Barbara had even talked about, uh, cost sharing on even paper, for paper, uh, doing the coffee or, we're doing that now, aren't we?
Yes, yeah. With paper, we are, you know.
So I mean, I guess we can revisit it, take.
I'd like to, you know, get the information on the fleet, about how that works and something like that, and what we're getting now with Irene Foster down country, which is, I think, like five cents a gallon.
Um, the second of the water fountains that reduces the use of plastic bottles was installed. Um, we did run across a little difficulty into wiring and a few sparks flying and so on and so forth, so the electric came down and did fix that and we're, can run with that. The rest is just a few dates. On November eleventh, Monday, there's no school due to Veterans Day. On Tuesday, we do start testing again for all kids, just to monitor their progress. This is the testing that we do three times a year and then depending on where kids score, they'll be put into the response to intervention process and we'll test again in a shorter period of time. November thirteenth, we have our third session with Brittany Ray for the tree program, which is transforming the rural education experience. The fifteenth, for the piece for teacher evaluation that is due to me is the student learning objectives. And what that involves is that, um, students will pre-test, gives me, teachers will pre-test students on a particular topic that they choose, teach the skill, test again, and then based on where the score is for the student's impact, part of the teacher evaluation. And that's how student scores are tied to the evaluation piece. On the nineteenth, I'll be going to the Washington County Leadership Team. This meeting, the purpose of it is to visit the harvest of ideas that all teachers in Washington County want to and to see where we can improve. And then I just wanted to remind you that at the next board meeting on the twenty-first, Brittany will be coming here to do a presentation for you guys and that will last a little than an hour.
Nice, nice report.
Any questions? I mean, SLO, what's the procedure then, they test on a subject or somebody's choosing?
Whatever, wherever the teacher is and the curriculum wants, take math and say, for example, it's two digit by two digit multiplication.
Got it.
So they give them a test, then they teach the material, then they give them a test afterwards to track their growth.
So it's the next year? It's not something you've already taught?
Okay, anyone from the school committee have anything?
Yes, I do.
Just one.
First of all, I'll, I'll go right back and I, I guess this might come under any agenda changes. I'd like to take a vote, uh, make a motion to take a vote to see if we can still get the after-school program the key to that teacher. Uh, it's ridiculous that we're still fighting this today. That door was locked again and, uh, luckily somebody was still there, uh, but somebody's going through a lot of trouble to keep that door locked, so the kids have to walk around. It was raining today and I think we voiced our opinions that we'd like to have her have this key. I don't know what the big deal is, uh, but so she can take those kids through. And if it's a problem, I think that we should put the kids right in the library where they always walk and they'll be part, in part of our school system. But so how do, how do we do that, Mr.?
Would you like that to be an agenda adjustment?
Yes.
That we vote on?
And, uh, I wanted to know too, like Mike said, do we find anything about the insurance on Lovett for their building that they have that? Their liability?
I have not had any more information come to me about that.
Okay.
Uh, she did assure us that unless they had insurance, they would not be going in as an active, um, offender.
Well, as I understand it, they are in there.
They are in there. They opened.
If we have received confirmation, insurance, we should have created the accident of last time.
Okay, I will.
Um, this, I wanted to ask about.
The what, here?
I will make a call down there tomorrow to confirm that.
That'd be great, thanks.
Um, I wanted a question. We signed warrants this week on McGraw and Hill. There was a bill for eight eighty-five hundred dollars and what did that pertain to? What kind of, what were the books or what program was it? It was, uh, that was a new math program that was approved at least the vote might have turned on once, something that we had spent before September thirtieth ago that would go back. And what grade was that case in eighth? And, uh, last time we met, we had the plumbing situation and did they look at the tape? I mean, somebody had said that was down there, said there may have been a mop or something that they.
I, this is the first I'm hearing, a mop or.
Something, they found something. It was, uh, either in John's, well, I heard it verbally, but there was something in there. I'm wondering if they checked tapes to look back to see.
The, the secure, video security tapes?
Yes.
To see if there was any kind of action that would have showed anybody putting anything into the plumbing? What we can do is. They go straight tell her to take a special tool, come off, don't they? I, I don't know.
I have no idea.
Or something was found in there.
Can you lead, can, can you lead me to the person so I can go talk?
I can ask him and I'll get back to you on that. You know, I'll ask him if he'll come to a meeting.
Okay, well, I don't know though necessarily a meeting, if I can just try to clarify, if he can give me some dates and a time where I should watch the video so I'm not watching five or six days' work.
Well, you guys, it went off on that Thursday night, so it wouldn't be five or six days' work. They had heard that night.
But if I'm trying to find if somebody put something in there, it could have caused it immediately or it may have taken some time for stuff to build up.
Yeah, well, we have the meeting on October the tenth and so maybe the seventh date or something like that, or was that the cause of that?
I don't know.
And I'm wondering too, Mr. Johnson, where we're at on our fuel situation. Uh, are they using fuel on the high school wing and how much have we used so far?
Okay, my, my understanding is that the heat is on, which means that on the school side where the kids are, we heat building appropriately for the students. And at this very moment, there would, there would be minimal heat on the LCOC wing and that would be simply to prevent a freeze up.
I don't believe there's any heat on, on that end due to the temperatures on October 14th.
Okay.
So they have a separate switch?
So they, so they, so we haven't put the switch? The switch is on our side. We haven't put the switch for them yet?
Yeah. So Sheldon's open for the next, the week in the next two weeks.
Right, okay.
Yeah, well, I was down there, uh, last week or the week before and, uh, it was warm in the building. I mean, I don't think they had that much sun up their head after meeting. Uh, I don't know. Because have they given any, uh, money towards the food fuel yet?
Not for this year.
Uh, have you talked to them? Do we anticipate getting in there?
I have not had a conversation, uh, toward that this year. Uh, my understanding is that we do have subcommittee working on advising at least and I would expect that to be working. I know I can't speak for the subcommittee, but it would seem logical to me.
And I had just one more question. Uh, under the Chawanki, under the schools, I found out today that program is thirty thousand dollars and what would our portion be paid for that, Mr. Johnson?
You pay one installment of approximately fifteen or sixteen hundred dollars and I signed the second one two days ago, so you'll see it, uh, the same amount, because I had a conversation with their administrator and said, we would not pay lump sum for one semester upfront. We're gonna pay month to month. So at, at the rate that we're paying, at the end of the semester, it will in fact be something around half a year's tuition, five thousand fifty-five hundred.
Okay, and this student, uh, which I'm glad the student got to go to this program, but they're not on any of our books for any other school while they're there.
Well, they can only be, I think they can only be enlisted in one school at a time and that would be a limitation of the state's software. But a student in question has attended WA during previous years and obviously I can't speak for the family, but I would expect that student to return to WA once this semester at the Chawanki School is complete. But that's where the student has attended historically.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, any further school board members have anything they want to say?
I would just like to say that I spoke with one of the parents of the student who's at Chawanki and I think as a school board approving, you know, the, the funding and facilitating the student going, we can feel really proud. She's a, the student is an incredible student academically and is being really challenged and loving the time at Chawanki and really benefiting. So I think that's an important role of the school board is to facilitate that kind of academic excellence and we should feel good about that.
Any further from school board? Superintendent's report.
Several items in my report this evening, but before I get into what you have there, I am gonna pass along some new information that has come to me during the course of this week. Actually, it was brought to my attention yesterday, the students. It's not often I get to be the bearer of good news, but tonight's the night. Lubac is eligible to participate in Energy Efficiency of Maine Small Business Initiative. And what that means is, uh, if, if you qualify for the project, and just so you know, we will randomly submit electric bills to see if you qualify, uh, you could have a project to, for example, replace lighting with more energy efficient light bulbs and, uh, that is reimbursed at a very high rate. I'll use Pembroke for comparison. I was there Monday night and I, I signed the contract today on their behalf. They're getting twenty-two thousand dollars of work done at four thousand dollar cost to them. And there is a, and the, the angle of small business, how that works in, is that energy efficiency at Maine is our, Pembroke's subsidy, if you will, for lack of a better term, goes to small business owners. It stimulates small business and the school gets to save electricity. It's, it's a win-win. So the total cost of twenty-two thousand dollars of work for Pembroke, uh, is gonna be four thousand dollars. So then we reimburse that eighty-six or eighty-eight percent.
What kind of work do they have done?
They are going to be replacing older style fluorescent lighting fixtures with newer LED, more energy efficient, longer lasting. And while I was confirming on the phone, because I confirmed on behalf of Pembroke how the money worked, Eastport had done two projects through them. Eastport had to front money and then once they submitted evidence of completion, they received reimbursement. Pembroke, Pembroke's project is organized differently, so they don't have to front the money and that's the Small Business Initiative. The small business in question, uh, is going to be paid directly, uh, which was part of the business stimulation. So it was easier for Pembroke to participate if they didn't have to front the money. I've been told over the phone by the administrator of that project that Lubac is at least on the list of being eligible. We had, we were instructed to submit data to verify, uh, if your project was qualified. So basically, they're gonna be analyzing off our internal data, what's your monthly expense, what's your kilowatt hour usage, to see if there's savings there. And unless you've had a recent upgrade, like the gym lighting, and I don't think you have in my tenure, but, um, it could work the order manage. And I, I told the person on the phones at all my schools, they're always interested in reducing energy costs.
The last upgrade to the gym lighting was nine years ago.
Nine years ago.
And the lights.
Not LED though.
You know, the lights that were put in, we can't get to the bulbs to change. We used to be able to go up in the ceiling and come down and change the bulb. These ones, we can't, you have to be on a.
Oh, babe.
Mm-hmm, and we don't have one.
So if you had classroom light, uh, that needed to be replaced, that also would be eligible under this type of program. So I don't wanna, I don't wanna get everybody's hopes up. I was hopeful that we'd get a transportation grant and have two school buses and we didn't get it and I was disappointed, but they're at least doing the checking, uh, energy efficiency of Maine and we're gonna be submitting your electric bills and keep your fingers crossed that your, your project will qualify based on your usage. You're already on the list of being eligible because there aren't a lot of electricians right here in Lubac and if you have to call for an electrician, they're coming from some distance and that's part of the program as well, rural underserved areas, that type of thing. But I'll pass along more information, uh, as it, as it comes to me. A couple of other items in my report following up from the last meeting with our policies. The question was put to me, why would we have to have the required policies if the law is already there? So I contacted Charlotte Bates and I got a, I got a multifaceted answer and there was one element I didn't expect, some of them I expected obviously, but this one is one that, uh, I should have anticipated, but I didn't. The policies pull together multiple laws and if you look at the last page of your policy, sometimes it's cross-reference with multiple laws. So a policy, and this, this, this is Charlotte Bates' recommendation, having the policy on the books helps you be in compliance with, with multiple laws. If, 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 if there's a change in the law, and she's an attorney herself, if there's a change in the law, it can affect how other laws are implemented. So a policy kind of pulls them together under the umbrella of the policy. And that contributes to, um, a characteristic that I was well aware of, it helps school administrators implement the law. Obviously neither Tina nor myself are lawyers by training, so if we have the policy, it helps us to implement the element of the law. And the last one does come up occasionally. Theoretically, if we were to apply for certain grants and did not have a policy in place, you could be ineligible. Uh, if that, if we thought that was the case, many times we would adopt a policy, you could be eligible for the grant and submit it, so that isn't that big a deal. Uh, but the first two elements seemed to weigh larger in Charlotte's mind and that was the response that I got. Uh, so I just follow up with the board on that item.
I just asked real quick, Mr. Johnson, is that a required or recommended? But you said there are two different kinds.
Yeah, the policies, the policies that I was primarily speaking of, which, uh, that were required policies. A recommended policy, you're not obligated to have and if you didn't have it, that's your choice. So obviously, you're supposed to, but it couldn't be penalized by not having an optional policy. So we were primarily speaking of the required policies. A couple of other items in my report tonight. I'd like to appoint Julie Long, cut one, ed tech three. My understanding that Julie's worked for us for several years.
Yes.
In the past, not currently, but currently she's at the Chai's, but has worked for us in the past. And the last items in my report, extracurricular coaching positions, and I would just say to the group that the recommendations that I have came from a five-person interview committee. Interview committee worked diligently during the course of the previous week and their recommendations are as follows. Phoebe Girls, Russell Wright. Phoebe Boys, Jesse Blake. Girls Basketball, Rebecca Lord. Boys Basketball, Larry Jones. That's all I had in my report for this evening.
And you didn't bring up the All-Star, Mr. Johnson. We have that team that's gonna be sat in our, All-Star Basketball. I think that'll come up in the handbook revisions.
Mr. Ashby and Tina are gonna speak to that one, I guess.
Okay, adjustments to the agenda.
We have one, uh, key to the library for the after-school program. Wanda made that motion. Would somebody like to second it and vote, so we can add it to the agenda?
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion on adding that to the agenda?
I, I will say, uh, we just, you know, it's been, I feel like it's a game to somebody down there.
Okay, any, anyone, any further discussion adding it to the agenda? Okay, all in favor? All opposed? Okay, we'll put that on the agenda.
Number one.
Yeah, we'll make that number one. Okay, so, the discussion I'm adding, uh, giving a key to the after-school program personnel.
And I'm asking for very valid reasons. There's no need of our kids to be walking out in the rain. There's no need of our kids them walking down every day and, oh my lord, the door's not open. There's just no need of that.
Now, is this nature be the only one that has the key?
Well, she said I'd be getting it.
Okay, so the key which, the key we're talking about is the key to the library? To get from the library into the LCOC section of the building.
And they've already approved it, uh, last meeting, the man who was here, and finally the LCOC going, they approved it too.
Yeah, LCOC had no problem. So would you like to make a motion on that, Wanda?
Yes, I'll make the motion that we, uh, assign a key for the after-school program teacher, which is one of them. One second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, my concern is just that giving a key to somebody else's, but if they've approved it, then without having other objections, when did they approve it?
Uh, I believe two meetings ago, they were in agreement that she should have a key.
They being?
At the time, um, the director of the LCOC was getting answers.
And not even that, if that's even an issue, really, our kids were in the library and they could certainly go back to the library.
That's a logistical thing that we might have to bring up another meeting. I mean, the door, uh, time to time is, is open and so on like that, I believe, um, you know, some of the kids go down there to cook in classroom in certain days and so on like that, so, uh, I really have no opposition to it. I mean, Linda Maker has been an employee of the school before she retired for a long time, so she knows the security issues that are involved and so on like that, so, um, and I think with inclement weather coming and so on like that, it's, uh, a lot easier to take the kids through the building instead of. through the building instead of outside the building, so.
Why is it, I'll give somebody else's facility, I can't, uh, L C O C give a key to their...
Because I think it's the key to the library that's the question, getting into the library and then getting into the L C O C section of the building, which would already be open.
Right, right. Those, the key that opens the library from the school side was a key that the L C O C gave to me. They had those locks changed, not us.
So it needs an L C O C lock?
Yes, it shouldn't have been. That's still, that school library is still our, part of our building, and I had the key to it. But I didn't have the key, and they had the locks changed. So who, who allowed that to occur?
So, so right now, there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded, discussion?
I don't, I don't understand why the school board is voting to provide an L C O C key to an L C O C employee.
Um, primarily because there's been a, a lack of access, getting the kids over to the after-school program in inclement weather?
No, I understand that. What I don't understand is, if it's an L C O C key, then it's an L C O C issue, and we're not necessarily involved.
I think, I think an L C O C key comes under, it's kind of confusing. It's the key to the library, okay, which is actually Lubeck's school property. The library still belongs to the school. It doesn't come under the L C O C, it's L C domain. But the key to get into the library, okay, is how they get the kids from the school into the L C O C section of the building.
So they have the ability and authority to make a copy of that key and just give it to their employee?
No, we have the key that we will give them access to the library door to unlock the library in the cafeteria section of the building.
There is locks, it's their key.
I only had one key that was given to me by them.
That's all we have.
It's, it's not locked on L C O C, it's locked on high side. L C O C doesn't come around every day and lock this door, Melissa.
No, but it's not L C O C's lock, it's L C O C's key.
It's our library though, that's the difference.
It's their keys, why don't...
It's our library.
They give it to their employee.
Then we need to change the locks back to our library and let our after-school teacher have a key to it. We're talking about it's locked.
That's all I have.
It's not our L C O C's.
No, it's, it's something that they do for our school, for our kids, they provide the program for our children. And they used to provide it in our library.
It's a, um, process that is used in the states. But we're not the school, we're not the authority.
No, but that is always a habit before Melissa. Where, you know what, where I'm doing the vote, our kids versus going through a building in weather conditions or walking out around. Now, who's opposed to our kids always going through a building versus going out around in weather? Who's opposed to that?
I'm opposed to giving keys to someone else's facility and having the potential liability that that entails, because they can't give it to somebody inside.
We'll change our lock back to, we've got, that's our library, that's not their library.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I just don't get it. I don't understand why it's an issue.
Well, I don't, I think we're playing with some issue.
I don't need that, Melissa, that's the funny part. I don't want to give it to them. Or what's the big deal is that our kids can't just walk through the school? It's, to me, it's ridiculous. But it's been a lot of school on now for two years, and it's just flash ridiculous.
Okay, so the question comes up now, is that it's the L C O C's key, and there's only one copy of it?
And not.
Right, now the error is to make a copy.
Not that, just change the lock to our library door. How easy is that? That's our library.
So is that the motion you're gonna make?
Not if we weren't gonna say, well, we got a copy, 'cause Melissa and Shanae don't want to take the key from L C O C.
No, it's because I don't want the liability for their facilities because of this.
There's no liability because of our library.
There is, and we're heading up their key, but their...
I mean, that lock became, I showed it with the master.
They hired Frankie, they hired Frankie to change locks. I don't know where the old lock went, the door knob, I don't know where anything went. And why were, how would they allow to do that? Who runs the school down there? Now I'm getting concerned. Who would know that the L C O C had permission to change our library door? Now who's responsible for telling them that? If I could get permission to have a key made, it would solve this whole situation. That's all I need.
Okay, we could change the motion. To reflect that.
Okay. Now, we're going to make the motion that we get, do we have to ask the L C O C? That we ask the L C O C again if we can have a key made so our after-school program teacher can lock the kids out of the library door versus outside in the cold in the weather?
What would be even easier is if the L C O C would just give her a key. Then we wouldn't have to have one made up.
You have one too.
I have one key, right. It's L C O C after-school program.
It's just as easy for Sheldon to go down and copy it.
After-school program, out of the L C O C. Why can't they just give their employee a key?
For Sheldon to copy it, Mike. That, that shouldn't be, that key, that key changes.
We've got two things going on. If, if it's L C O C's lock, if it's L C O C's key, then L C O C should give a copy to their employee. Let's say it's our library door locked, then we need to put in school library lock, a school library key. So those are the two choices. Neither one of which is reflected in the motion, which is give a key to somebody else's facility and accept the liability that may arise out of that, because nobody's seen that.
Well, the thing, I, I can't get a clear answer on it. When was that lock changed?
Nobody knows, nobody's running it, they say, oh, no.
You know, if the lock was changed, can we change the lock back to the possession of the Lubeck School?
So my response to that is, L C O C had it changed, we think about four years ago, Ari. So where the old lock went, where the old door knob went, where the old, I don't know. They hired a locksmith to come in and do it.
It's not that hard to change.
Well, we can afford money, maybe we can take it out, some of the miscellaneous pounds. If we're short on money, buy a new lock.
Because technically, it's not their room, it still belongs to the Lubeck School. Okay, so, and if they're quote-unquote in possession of the key and the lock that opens that door, then it should be changed over back to a Lubeck School lock where the Lubeck School department has control of that door.
So shall I make that motion?
That'd be great.
Uh, well, I'll make a motion now to have that key changed, the key lock changed back to the possession of Lubeck, uh, property. So that we could give a key.
And provide, and provide a key to that lock.
Provide a key to the after-school program. And they have no reason to, like, there's two doors, thankfully, three getting into that. And they have no reason to even have to use the other two.
Yeah, I wasn't aware that, that had been changed several years ago, so. Okay, so we have a second on that motion? We have the motion as intended?
Let me, let me just try and capture the intent. Uh, motion is to change the lock on the library to the school key and give a copy of the key to the after-school program director. Is that the intent of this group?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So might I say, as your superintendent, that I agree with this course of action?
Yeah, because we have to control, I mean, that's our room. The Lubeck School department should have control of that room.
This, this is why I say I agree with that. Uh, your lot, in its original form, the library is like a shared space between your elementary school and the high school. And that's why it's in the middle of the building. The entire facility, uh, is still under the control of this group, because, um, you're essentially a landlord. And I don't know of a landlord that doesn't have keys to the individual rooms in an apartment. If you were in Newark, New York City, rented an apartment on Fifth Avenue, your landlord, you know, can key your room. So you should have keys to all the rooms regardless of who you're leasing to. The lease would govern the use of the library, because the after-school program is an L C O C program. This would come under the terms of the lease, in my opinion. So you need to have a key. Changing it to your key makes sense to me, for all those reasons. The elephant in the room that we're not talking about, which Shanae touched on it briefly, on the off chance that through the implementation of the after-school program, that something on the school side is lost or damaged, the elephant in the room is who's liable for that? And I would have to say that the L C O C would be, because it's their program. It may be our facility, the library may be keyed to us, as I believe it should be. But there does not seem to be any dispute that the after-school program is an L C O C program. And I can back that up by simply saying, your after-school program isn't in your school budget. So there's a lot of areas, you know, and I'm on pretty solid ground there. So I don't know if it's been fleshed out, what would happen under those circumstances. You know, I, hypothetically speaking, after-school program, you know, a, a child spills a soda on the carpet or rips the cover off a book, you know, I don't believe that would be a big deal, but stranger things have happened. But we don't have the answer to the question, who's responsible?
Are you talking about happening in the library or going back into the school?
The, the, the issue would be the same in either place.
Going either way.
Well, I mean, it could be that the locks are different going one way than the other way.
The first thing is, we need to change that lock back over to the school department's control.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we can turn around and we can give a key to whoever we want to give it to.
Well, to Mike, I don't know both. There's two other doors that go into that room. Uh, but we've already had permission, and it is their program for those kids to get through there, those, that door safely, with the, the other door in there.
And I believe that during the normal course of the day, when the kids are in there cooking, those doors, those, both those doors are open.
So they keep them open for the cooker, but they don't keep them open for the after-school program?
So I think the first thing is to change the lock back to the school department's control, so we have access to that room.
Who, who's making that revised motion, is that who's doing that?
Wanda made that motion, and it's been seconded by Shanae. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five in the... Consider adoption of the following required policies. Uh, A E B, A A, chemical hazards. This is the second reading, this is the meeting of the adoption of the policy.
I think I asked Mr. Johnson this last time, Mike. Uh, what certifications does Sheldon have to have for, for this? Like the, uh, the chemicals and everything else?
He doesn't, he doesn't need, he doesn't need certification. In the policy, it makes reference to the chemical hygiene officer. And I, I believe, I believe we've named him. If we haven't named him, we need to name somebody, but I'm going from memory. It's just somebody that we have to name. Um, we have people that we have to name for certain positions, IPM coordinator, the integrated pest management, things of that nature, but there are certain positions that we just have to name somebody, sort of stake and mail them information. Uh, so he doesn't need any specific certification for that, but the policy does call for a chemical hygiene officer, somebody who knows where the MSDS sheets are, somebody who knows what chemical might be in the building, somebody who knows who to contact in case of a spill or ingestion or whatever.
So, uh, does he, uh, does he make up the MSDS, what does he have?
I suspect he would have to make it up to a great extent, simply because of the cleaning materials that he uses. And I believe I mentioned this at the last meeting. If he orders a bulk pack of toilet cleaner or kitchen sink scrubber or whatever, if you get a multi-pack of Comet or Ajax or fill in the blank, it comes with an MSDS sheet in the package, and it's just a question of putting it in the binder.
And, you know, I've never noticed it anywhere, but there must be an ice wash down there somewhere, station. Is there an ice wash station?
It's required for certain places, like a chemistry lab or an IA shop. If we have one, it might not be on the elementary wing, just because that's not part of our elementary program. But those would be the two places that I would lock, either the old science lab or the high school wing or down in the shop.
There's three down there, there's one in the kitchen, one in my classroom, and I'm Kathy, one in my classroom.
Okay, so I have a motion on that? Is there a draft that is proposed?
I'll make the motion for adoption.
Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on chemical hazards policy? All in favor? Okay, next policy is G B O Family Care Leave Act.
And is this one required, Mr. Johnson? Now, I, I had a question about that. In the teacher's, um, the teacher's contract, uh, there's, they have quite a, more specific than what this is. I'm just wondering why we would have another one? They have all of this basically in more, in their contract, so why do the schools make you do it, another one?
Because the, the policy that you have closely follows, uh, F M L A, Family Medical Evac. And as the answer Charlotte gave to me, having the policy just makes it easier to implement those things. Family Medical Evac was pretty complex. I had to work, had to work through that here in Lubeck a couple of years ago. And it was far more complex than I anticipated. So that's, that's the only answer that I have, Wanda.
Uh, I'm wondering, I, I looked at that one, too, I looked this one up, and I compared it. Uh, I'm wondering if we could, um, well, I'm wondering if we can just table this and do a little bit more homework on it?
If that's, if that's a motion, that's what you're gonna do.
I'm asking, being a student.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to table this. Do we want to research individually? Is that the motion you would like to make, Wanda?
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, it's a lot more in-depth than what, than this one is. Uh, but I'd like to look at it a little bit longer, so.
Okay, is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor of tabling right now? All opposed? What is four to one? Next policy is the I H P G homeschooling.
Is there a copy of that?
Then on this one, did we find out how many homeschool students we have in Lubeck?
I don't have, I don't have that number with me tonight, and I'm sorry, Melissa, I don't seem to be able to put my hand on another copy. Did I distribute one of those at the last meeting? But I am more familiar with that policy, just to recap for the, for the group that's present here tonight. The difference between this policy, which you don't have on the books, and the one that you do have on the books, this policy refers to the nuts and bolts of the process that parents are responsible for. Uh, the state now has an online portal, and a parent has to identify that, yes, I'm homeschooling my child. They have to provide an educational plan. Um, they can even be asked to submit curriculum and assessment samples. They have to, uh, secure a third party evaluator who will determine whether or not the child in question has made educational progress.
And all of these things are state law?
Yeah. And that's what, that's what's in this policy. The policy that you have governs homeschoolers participating in your program. Homeschool students have the right to come into the public school and participate to as much of an extent as they wish in regular education programming, but also an extracurricular program. So a homeschool student can play on our soccer team, they can come in and take math. And in my experience in education, that becomes more common as the student grows older, because as they go up in the grades, the math and the science becomes more complex, and the parents may or may not... and the parents may or may not be able to continue that level of instruction. So that's how your existing policy, that's what it's geared toward, would be the participation of homeschool students in your programming, whereas the policy in front of you for consideration is more on the nuts and bolts and the legalities and the process of what parents have to do. And that's the difference between.
But the nuts and bolts are still reflected in state law.
They are.
So we still have to adhere to that state law?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion on this second reading and adoption? A second on that? Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? In favor, two, opposition is three.
So what does that mean if it's required?
So, that's a good question, and as your superintendent, this is how I would handle it. Your vote is your vote, and you will not have that policy. Because the law and the procedures still exist, if a parent comes to me or comes to team with questions, how do I do this? What's the next step in the process? I have no choice but to advise that parent based on the tenets of the law as I understand them, and I would put that person in contact with the appropriate Department of Education, and that's how I would have to handle that. Because the law is on the books, the procedures are there, and I'm obligated to follow those. If you vote no, you voted no, I respect that. You will not have this policy, you will not appear in the policy manual, but just please understand as a board that if a parent calls my office, that they come into team's office with questions, we have no choice but to advise them as the law reads and put them in contact with the appropriate Department of Education.
Can I just understand what the objection is? I mean, we don't have to answer, but I just want to understand.
Well, one thing right now, myself, is we're not, we're not up to date with, one thing that we're responsible for is to have these students logged in and have a look at their plan, what their plan is, and we have that. And Mr. Johnson, Mr. No, because we don't know what number of students we have in U-Bet that are homeschooling.
Okay, so.
What is the state responsible for?
It is. So you would not see, you as a group, would never see that educational plan? What the law calls for is for the parent to have that plan on file with the state and simply to provide me a copy of it. But a parent does have the right to educate their child. However, mandatory school age is seven to now sixteen. So there has to be some plan in place. Based on my experience in education, which is over twenty years now, I think there have been some parents in the past who feel like, well, if I homeschool, we're going to sit at my kitchen table and nobody is going to be able to tell me what I'm going to teach my child, and I'm going to be responsible to myself, then okay. But the law, mandatory school age, seven to now sixteen, that, you can't get away from that, so that's why this policy is in place because it outlines what it takes to be in So you would never see an educational plan of a homeschooler? And I think I said this at the last meeting, when it's done correctly, I get a note at the MBE from a third party evaluator that says Johnny or Susan has made adequate yearly progress and we're recommending go to the next grade level. And when it works correctly, all I see is notifications that a homeschooler in my district has been successfully approved. I don't see a name, I just get a faulty mail that says, from the state, homeschool application approved. Okay, state, that's confidentiality, and that's all that I see. Beyond that, I mean, we've got the number in my office, I didn't bring it with me for U-Bet and obviously for the rest of the district, but that is a parent's right, but they do have to comply with the law, and that's about all I can say.
And I did try to find this with all these numbers, and I, you know, if this is, it's near one, and that's what I call them, but I couldn't even, I couldn't find anything that was close in Googling this that was even close to what we have written down here.
Okay, next item, J I C H Drug and Alcohol Use Abuse Independence. J I C H R Drug and Alcohol Use Abuse Independence Procedures.
I do have a revised copy. I believe at the last meeting, the board directed me to put that paper footballed. To revise some of the, and if I remember correctly, it was the desire at least to take out any reference to a morally judgmental wording, whether something is good, bad, or ugly, and we attempted to do that. Also added wording to the effect of principal or designate, I believe was a recommendation from this group, so that also now appears in that revised document.
Okay, do you know where those changes were inserted?
The language about something being good or bad, whether it was morally judgmental, appears on the second page toward the end, and principal or designate is toward the
Let's some maps that I can suspend. I've had it suspended in, I don't know, two, three years. Oh, I'll wait until there. At the same weather.
Okay, looking for motions.
I'll make a motion to the superintendent's policy or to revise policy.
Not here in a second, I'll have to table it.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Yes.
I object to the, you know, for first offenses suspended for ten days because if you've got a kid with a drug issue, they're all coming out on the streets for ten days completely from quiet little sounds and not be very productive.
Couple things that I would say. My experience with this policy is more at the secondary level, but I will say the same law applies to elementary students. Drugs and violence, the two items specifically mentioned in the law that rise to a potential expulsion level event, I say potential expulsion. In order to expel anybody, we would have to convene a special board meeting in there as a proceeding, and the board would have to vote, but those two items are mentioned specifically in the law as being potentially expulsion. More to your point, Melissa, if we suspended a student for ten days, it could be at risk by not being in school, or be at risk in the community or whatever. As a school department, we have an obligation to the entire student body as a whole and to the learning environment, and we would have to ask ourselves, you know, to, how would this student be considered a threat to that learning environment or to other students? Was there any risk to the group if we allowed that student to remain in the classroom? That's the decision that administrators have to weigh. I can tell you that I've had to weigh that very decision under some different circumstances in different places, and it's an extremely difficult decision. I believe there's also language in there that would say, refer to area counseling services truthfully in this part of the county. Those counseling services are few and five between, and that is a problem because this part of, the rural parts of the state, and this is certainly one of those, certainly don't have a wealth of resources. In practice, what would it look like if we had to suspend somebody for ten days under those conditions? Let's call the parents in and have that conversation and ask them if they have a plan to try and help their child. I've seen cases where it's adversarial, I've seen cases where it's been more positive, and it's more constructive, and it's how can we help them? But those are the types of conversations that would have to be had, I would not want this board to think that if we had to go this route, that school officials would somehow be draconian or unsympathetic or cold-hearted or any of those things, but we do have a responsibility to the student body as a whole and the learning environment in what is appropriate for that.
Yeah, I would have researched this, but I haven't had a chance since the last board meeting. I assume that the ten days was a state mandate that has to be ten days instead of the roadies or something.
Uh, yes and no. Ten days is the maximum that we can give, and Tina correctly quoted that, that being the veteran administrator this year. However, there are some unusual circumstances where this board could vote to extend a suspension beyond ten days. You would have to be looking at compensatory educational services, tutoring somehow, but those are extreme.
Well, my question was more, what Melissa was asking, does it have to be as many as said?
No.
Then why can't we say up to ten days?
If you'd like to amend the policy to that effect, I wouldn't feel bad about amending it with such a change, but ten is the maximum.
Yeah, I read this saying they had to be up to ten days.
That is how it's written. You're correct, that is how it is written, and it is very much a local decision within this board's prerogative to do as Sinead has suggested, make it up to ten, and by inserting the words "up to," you're giving administration some discretion to consider certain changes.
Well, we have an opportunity now too, in our school system, having a nurse call town. We have always right there in our system.
Can we amend the motion or the amendment?
Yeah, but up to.
So you want to amend the motion to include up to ten days suspension?
Mm-hmm.
Just to say the words "up" and "to" before the time period for each enumerated suspension.
Each done.
Yeah, yeah, move on back.
Okay, second on that amended motion. Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Okay. Motion to amend it, fine, just read it.
Yep. Okay, to consider the first reading of the athletic handbook. My question is, why are we rewriting this handbook after we worked on it for so long years ago?
Has Ashley and I?
Yes, to bring some clarity and remove some ambiguity in the policy.
Do we have a pocket yet?
What's that?
It should have been emailed around Tuesday.
Print is at work.
Well, I went down to the school when I got last year and this year for the new one, so I see what's changed.
So one example that would lead us to ask this question, or All-Star basketball? All-Star would lead to believe that there's some type of process that was voted, where the players have reached some type of level where they selected the team, where that really wasn't true, so the simple change would be basketball instead of All-Star basketball. Some clarity is such a bad. One was under.
I think I have one more kind of thing still, I don't understand.
Sure.
Yeah, what you're saying.
So All-Star basketball would lead one to believe that players were selected the team by a voting process? So to make it clear, because that never happened, it was simply changed to a basketball team for the grades.
What do after-schools call this team?
This basketball team.
All-Star basketball is when you have a player from another town doing, you do a different round of basketball, it's not what you're seeing in high basketball teams. It's a completely separate season.
It is a separate season.
And it's when you have other teams, other players from other towns come enjoying your team.
So I went to a meeting last night for the schedule, All-Star never came up, it's just the same coin league, so to represent that, it was changed simply to basketball within our handbook.
So you won't be doing an All-Star season?
Yes, we will. Yeah, we'll be playing this season coming up.
My understanding is this season starts pretty quick, do you know? And what I'm wondering is, why didn't we have a coach at least two weeks ago so our kids could start practicing for this? Now, this is Tina and you together.
The committee just got an application Tuesday, we just finished interviewing Tuesday.
But we still knew that this was coming.
And I advertised, and I had the wait till applications commence.
We've had somebody apply to this, that person contacted me as a reference, and this has been almost three weeks ago. So I just don't understand what the delay is. My feeling about this is our town voted for our students, and they never, ever deny our kids these programs, and it seems like we run into situations all the time that we want to change something. It's what it is, and if we're waiting for a coach down there, I don't know what we're waiting for, but we had a coach apply that would have been starting practice with our students all that.
I had one question, why was another coach in on the interview?
I picked three teachers, former athletic director and myself.
And Larry?
He's a teacher.
But he's also a coach.
And I picked him because he was a teacher at that age level.
Are we here about the handbook?
We are, we're reviewing the changes in it, Sinead, that, yeah, we are, Sinead, but we're talking about what our shoulder to get denied.
No.
But that is a legitimate question, a coach should not be able to interview another Or a potential coach.
It's like this, now, Mr. Johnson announced all the coaches, so why wasn't this coach in there? I didn't hear his name.
No, I can't even get that.
I'm sorry. I didn't know who it was.
I don't get that because he's been a coach all these years.
Hold on, hold on.
And it's not right.
Okay, we're here talking about the changes in the handbook, but the big question I have is that we have all these little changes up here, and two years ago, we worked very hard to get this handbook straightened out, there was a lot of stuff in there that was repetitive and a lot of stuff that didn't make any sense. Who came up with these changes?
Mr. Ashby and I sat down in the spring and went through these looking at that, and lived it through until June.
And question for the superintendent, do we have an athletic director?
We do not.
Has anybody applied to that decision?
Not to my knowledge.
Then if nobody has, right here in this book, the school board has an opportunity to, I make a motion to appoint one. If one hasn't been made, in this right here, Mr. Johnson, it says, I mean, you know what? Our kids, it's just like our kids, and I am upset about that, very upset. We didn't even have an announcement that our soccer league, or our intercom system in our school, they system in our school, they didn't even, uh, announce congratulations to our kids. Now, I don't know who is the head of the announcement, but our kids deserved it. It was in, it would be in the quality ties, it was in county wise, uh, why it wasn't announced over our intercom system. Are we not proud of our kids? Although we want to acknowledge them. I mean, I just don't get it.
Why are we not allowed to appoint us?
The procedure, and this is true of, uh, teachers as well, if I don't make a nomination, the board essentially has nothing to vote on. And that's, the, the best illustration is hiring a teacher. I come with a name, the board votes and then a contract follows and that's a three-part process. So you can't just point out in the air, I have to bring a name for it. And if, if nobody applies, then, then I don't have a name to, to come forth. I have consistently said that we don't have an athletic director. I have said that Mr. Ashby and Tina are doing the services at no cost because I haven't appointed either of them. And, 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 and that's the truth.
Right now it says here, Mr. Johnson, you appoint Mr. Johnson.
Okay.
Uh, depending for the supervision of extracurricular activities, this is in their contract book.
Yeah.
Uh, shall be based on the responsibility and time required. Should no qualified teacher volunteer for a position, the school board will seek candidates outside the school system.
Yeah.
So that's it, the school board is going to do this. Now, here we are, we're into November, uh, we should have had a, an athletic director, uh, maybe at the first, in August, so we could start our year off like with our student that way.
So, so when you say the school, the school committee shall seek candidates?
What does that mean?
You seek candidates by putting an advertisement in the newspaper and the fact that it appears in the teacher's contract essentially means that the way the contract is written, we're giving, essentially giving preference to in-house candidates. So if you have a teacher who's interested and the teacher has the opportunity to, you know, get the stipend, but if no teacher steps up, we obviously need somebody to perform a service for kids, so then you go to the outside. And there are other, there are other examples where the phraseology is similar. So when, when it says the board shall seek other candidates or seek outside candidates, you do that by putting an ad in the newspaper and we've, we've, we've done that and Tina brought the ads one night, but that is how the seeking of other candidates is accomplished.
So I still don't get who is the, uh, I'll, I'll call it the all-star tonight. They just changed that and if they started on this way back in June or July, then the other day I went down to get a copy of each of these, the old one and the new one, and it was still, I think, in the process of being edited. You start it in June, but you don't finish it to November? I mean, really?
So who will be coaching the all-star?
Why did I have to switch to all-star? Who's the coach for all-stars?
I guess it's not all all-star.
I guess the question is who's the coach for basketball?
For the special league of, or basketball.
Has anybody applied? I know one person.
Yes, they have applied. They applied three weeks ago and our kids should have been, in my book, they shouldn't have been practicing.
Everybody else has.
That's right. Uh, but we've got to play that little game every time.
Folks, folks, get a little off track here. This is a first reading. Okay, so what I'd like to do in the board is like the director of the board to take these changes with them, review them, look at them, and at the next meeting we'll discuss them even further. This is a first reading.
In the superintendent's report, doesn't it say that the boys' basketball coach and girls' basketball coach?
Yes, but they've always had an all-star season.
All-star competition.
And they don't have a, they, they do it for the volunteer.
The volunteer season.
So can I have a motion on the first reading of the athletic handbook changes, please?
Can I just ask, do we have a coach for this basketball?
I move to approve.
Hold on, all right, we're good. A motion, have a second on that motion? Okay, all in favor of the first reading of the athletic handbook changes? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Five, three to two. Okay. Do you have a question?
I do. Are they allowed to tell us, the, uh, A D, the athletic director and the principal, can they tell us if they chose anybody if it's a basketball team? Phil, can you tell us who has been a coach?
Mr. Johnson, Mr. Johnson's point, I can, two coaches for the athletic season, if we're ever in that kind of place, I believe it's...
So they will do the special season as well where they pull a person from another town?
I can't answer, I'm not sure, I probably took her.
Okay, but you didn't work it.
Is there a special season?
Yes, it is. You all, this also, they call it, is before the junior high basketball.
Those people practicing in November, like those people...
They're supposed to be practicing like within the last couple of weeks. And all the kids have been waiting for this, boys, girls, everybody, but the school won't give no answers.
I, I made a motion that Mr. Johnson recommend us an athletic director that is on target for our students and I also recommend that it just be the athletic director. He, that, just let it be that one person with no interruptions from anybody else. This should have been in place and it is not fair to us to reach out one hand and agree.
It's only, it's only fair if we have someone apply for that job.
What they have to apply.
You can't, you can't recommend just off the top of his head, you've got to have someone apply for it. So, I mean, we're still running an ad for that? I know we've been running an ad because I saw the ads in the, in the forum today.
You know what? Eventually the citizens of this town are going to get sick of this kind of stuff right here. Our kids do not deserve this, not one kid.
And we should get somebody to apply for the athletic director.
For the season coming up. Who is gonna, who is gonna do practices in games the November to January season?
I guess it's up to Tina and Bill. That's what they said earlier, but they...
Well, so when would we be doing this? We've done this every other year.
I can tell you what the problem is.
For her eighth grade season.
Yeah, nobody.
For the...
So we don't have a team?
No. Let me tell you, Amber, it's not important enough, okay? In my book, it's just not important.
Oh, it is. This is my daughter's eighth grade year.
Mine too.
Your daughter's eighth grade year.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, 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 I'd like to go on with this, but it's not in the agenda. Okay?
The basketball coach wasn't...
Yes, it was.
Okay, to consider extending the school day one hour to make up for storm days. This is what we did last year. Do you have any input from the teachers on this?
So, can I...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Next, the school board meeting is going to be taken completely by Brittany Ray. Is that true? When, when will this...
No, I have, I have other things on the agenda, so it might be a long meeting.
So this will be, the second reading will be next meeting?
Possibly, yes.
On the twenty-first of November?
Right after the season has started. So if you ask me, I can...
If you put the changes on this, uh, extension day.
It's, it's still in the beginning, it's still in the beginning.
Wanda, please. And also...
Yeah, the sports, nineteen for a one-hour, um, extension and four for Saturday. I dug a little bit further into the questions on the waivers. And what it talks about is when you have an early release day, you can extend that day to include some of the hours for makeup. For example, on December four, we have an early release day. It takes five hours to make a day. If we call, if the teachers were willing to do that, if we call the early release day a full day, that gives you three of those five hours. If you didn't want students coming, I can only do this if teachers agree on that. But the question on the table is to extend it and then there's a wiggle rule. So instead of getting out at eleven, we can get out at two and that will take three of the five. But the vote was nineteen for the one-hour extension, four for Saturday.
For five days that we haven't missed yet.
Right, well, we've missed one already.
We have one hour.
Well, we did it one.
Right.
Okay, so I have a motion on this to extend the, uh, school day out by one hour to make up for storm days?
I move.
Second on that?
Except that's not what Tina was suggesting. It's to go from an early release to a full day.
Just this one time. I, this, this, this question here, um, let's re... Answers that, the highlighted, frequently asked question about how you can use early release days if you choose to do your one-hour extension.
Do you have a second on the motion? Any further discussion?
Yeah. I don't feel still this year again, I don't feel that it's fair for our kids to get out on that bus at six in the morning and now we're asking them to be home by four-thirty in the afternoon. That is not convenient for our family or our students. We've got to start thinking about the kids.
I think it's all about the six, twenty, everyone.
I agree, it makes for a long day. It does.
I will just again say your teachers voted nineteen to four.
I wonder why.
Okay, so, any further discussion? Consider extending the school day by, by one hour to make up one storm day, is all in favor? All opposed? Opposition three, all in favor was two. So we'll have to revisit this at a different date. Consider forming a budget subcommittee. And this is, uh, your request, Wanda, and raising behind us.
Uh, I, what I'd like to do, Mike, is when we start, which we'll be in two months, we're going to start our budget and I think if we all start, you know, coming to the meetings together and all of us working on this budget, I mean, I'm working on it. Now, I'll tell you this today, for example, uh, you know, taking this budget apart, I contacted somebody at the state level, a vote gifted and talented, and not that I'm opposed to having this at all. We have three students and it costs us eleven thousand dollars. Now, we're in the top three in this budget with Pembroke, no, it's Luback, Pembroke and Eastport, right, we're the top three that pay the most.
Yes.
With the most students. So I, I talked to them today about even with this, looking at our budget, at the cost of our budget for the number of kids, um, there's something very wrong with it. And they said that this year in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, they're going to be reviewing this gifted and talented and they want to make it more equitable for all the students. But I just, I looked this up. I have Perry, Pembroke and Eastport's most recent budget. Pembroke was three thousand, Eastport was seven thousand and Luback's was eleven thousand. Uh, Perry didn't have one, I didn't understand that at all, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, their gifted and talented teacher retired, uh, two years ago and they get a waiver to not implement a program. Alexander also has a waiver on the grounds that they can't find a certified teacher. Eastport has a certified teacher in-house and you share your teacher with Pembroke. So that's, that's why.
I mean, Pembroke, they're like three thousand and ours is the eleven thousand. Uh, uh, things like that, I just feel like us as the board, I don't feel like I should do this all on itself. I know one board member can, but I think that we should be, uh, more cognitive of our budget and seeing where we can produce cotton, uh, just like this one area. Now, you said that we have three students in there and I don't want to deny any students any type of education, just like with Chawonki, I was never denied, uh, but we're doing something wrong in a water business department that, you know, our budget looks like this and these other schools' budget is, uh, just like ninety thousand last year for school in, uh, one of the schools and I Pembroke or Perry was like, uh, thirty or forty thousand. I mean, we're just not, we're not being cognitive and not, I don't think with our budget, it's why in one...
So you would like to be on this subcommittee?
Yeah.
Okay. If anyone else wants to be part of this subcommittee, you can have two members.
I'll help when I can. Okay.
So Wanda and Ariam to be on the subcommittee? Okay, two.
John? As I indicated before, I did have some questions regarding this particular item.
Yes.
I note that every member of the board has the authority to investigate any line of the budget and to comment on that. What my question is, and I'd like to be able to explain this to the public through the newspaper, is why would this board establish a subcommittee where two members have then greater influence on, on the budget, when in fact the town has a duly elected budget committee that is authorized to look at the municipal budget, but not authorized to look at school budget?
Yeah, they're, they're with us with, in budget workshops.
Well, but they don't have the legal authority to do so. They are invited guests.
Yes, true.
They, they are not mandated to be there as they are with the term. That's because you're a part of an S A P.
Right.
That's not because of any other thing, okay?
Because we're our own fiscal agent.
Yes, that is correct.
Right.
So my question is, we have a team of other people in a committee not related to this group here, who specialize in looking at budget matters. Why would the, the board enact what is being proposed here as opposed to taking advantage of something that is already in place at the term?
We're going to take advantage of that, John.
You don't.
Well, I was on that budget committee up at the town last year.
Yeah.
And I, we were involved, actively involved with it. The only difference was that the town did listen to recommendations, they were interested in our input, whereas, and I said it at the town meeting this year, I didn't feel that the school, uh, was as interested in what, you know, the budget committee, but it isn't like this one department, John. When we're spending eleven thousand dollars in another school...
I don't want to get into specifics.
No, but that's why we need to get started now. Uh, you know, we don't need to start waiting until January. We don't make up this budget. Uh, Mr. Johnson and Tina make the budget up.
I would like to point out that when you go to the annual town meeting, we have a warrant with all these articles on it. Every article has underneath it, select board recommends or doesn't recommend, budget committee recommends or doesn't recommend. That line is not present at any of the school referent, budget referendum, it's just not there.
It has been in the past though.
Uh, no, I don't believe it has.
Two years, two years ago it was. This year it wasn't for some reason, I don't know why.
No, I don't have any copies that had it, you know?
Okay. Two years ago it was because we had a very active budget committee, two years ago. This past year, I believe we had three budget workshops and I believe, so at least two of them, only one budget committee person showed up. So, two years ago, two years ago that was, I believe, that was recommended by the budget committee. I believe the intentions of forming a subcommittee here, uh, like Wanda said, is that, you know, we need to get kind of on this now versus wait for the A O S to push out numbers to us. Because every month we get a running budget, what's in our budget, what's gone out, what's been expended to this date. So I think if we have a subcommittee, we can kind of, you know, get in front of things and find out, okay, what are we heavy on, what do we light on, what do we need to take a look at and so on. And then when the A O S pushes out the numbers, we're already there, we have these figures in front of us, what we should be looking at.
And now that we are, we're all pushed on like our legal services. Right now, we're already, it's two months or two months into school and it's already twenty-three percent left, left in this account. Uh, you know, just to, uh, review this a little bit closer, I mean, we get a printout every month of our budget and this will give us an opportunity and share with the board and Mr. Johnson, uh, you know, what, what's going on with this? And this will give us an opportunity and share with the board and Mr. Johnson, uh, you know, what's going on with this? Like, I'm really wondering with our gifted and talented right now, why is ours 11,000 and they're down 3,000 and 7,000? We're a double of any other school in this area.
Is that related to the number of students?
Okay. So several things I would say. Your gifted and talented program has a separate application that goes in, that goes in through the state. And you, that number that you see there, um, is informed by the state. That's been the historical number, and that number could wiggle because the state has to approve what our budget is. You can supplement it if you want. You can add more lines to it. But the, we are using that $11,000 figure because that's what's in the state application form that comes to us. So the other thing I would say about that money is it's factored into your special ed reimbursement because it's organized under the special education umbrella. So that's reimbursed to you at a higher rate. Uh, what the, how historically that number became 11, I don't know. It was 11 before I got here. So the historical data that generated that number, I, I just can't comment on that. But I would say that my office does not generate that number. We put on the page what we're approved for in terms of the application. Uh, so I'll just say that. Uh, another comment that you referenced, you're correct. The fuel oil consumption is lower at Perry, for example, uh, and Eastport, and there are very good reasons for that. Perry is a newer facility with a more efficient system and also a much smaller facility. In the case of Eastport Elementary, it's not a smaller facility. Eastport Elementary was renovated in the late 80s to accommodate approximately 300 students. So it's not necessarily smaller in terms of square footage, but it does have a newer system. And it's got a programmable system, and I feel there's some complaints about that today because it was hot in some parts of the building and cool in others. But newer facilities with more efficient heating systems are going to operate for less money. Smaller facilities will also operate for less money. Uh, and so, I mean, you, your figures were correct. I mean, those budgets are in the public domain. They're approved by those towns. You can get copies. Uh, but there are, there are logical explanations as to why those expenses would be less in those towns compared to yours. Uh, your facility, I don't think you're the oldest facility in the district, but if you're not, you're the second oldest district. And that's only because I don't know how old Charlotte is.
Well, one thing, Mr. Johnson, I found out today too. I know other things for having a subcommittee. Now, I didn't realize this, John, like with gifted and talented. And I don't deny our students anything. Uh, but I didn't realize that this person told me in two years we'd get reimbursed for gifted and talented, and I didn't know that. And there's a lot of these areas, departments that we get reimbursed that I don't feel we know about. Uh, and even if we can gather that type of information...
The reimbursement, you're correct. It is, there is a delayed reimbursement, and it is approximately a year and a half to two years. That's true. The reimbursement is included within your subsidy. So when we, so when we put the subsidy figure on, and that comes to us on the state on the form, the reimbursement is in there under, under your special education allocation. So the reimbursement's coming to you, that's true, but it doesn't come to you separately. That is what is, that is part of what's in your subsidy.
But I mean, I just, I feel it will help all of us, John, in this budget process. I really do. I, you know, we did get a little jumpstart on this.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to consider forming a budget subcommittee to consist of Wanda, Ariam Savage. We have a motion.
Oh, I'll make the motion.
It's already been seconded. All in favor?
Go, go. I'm getting you two as volunteering to be on the committee, but I still do need a motion and a second to create the committee itself. So that's just the point of the procedure.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to, uh, create the subcommittee, uh, for the, uh, for ongoing budget.
Okay, second on that motion?
I'll second it. I'll make it again.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just like to observe that it seems to improve to form a budget subcommittee with 50% of members voting against every single item on the school budget this year. Are we pre-approached? I said it seems to me to be improving to create a subcommittee on the budget with 50% of members being someone who voted against every single item on the school budget this last year. That's it.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, you're looking here until you see me reporting a budget subcommittee. And we're done?
I feel like most of the work is...